I call this special town meeting to order. I have no idea what that sounds like. New sound system. I call this special town meeting to order. I’m Joanne Berry, Town Moderator. Welcome and thank you all for coming out tonight. This is a very oddly timed meeting in many ways, but it’s good to see so many of you Thanks to town and school staff and Acton TV for making the arrangements and setting up this meeting on this unusual schedule. How many folks are here for the first time? I know there were two little pipsqueaks down here, but a few people. Great, thank you for coming. As we go along, we hopefully everything will become clear. I’ll explain things as we go. We will be using pro and con mics. They’re labeled, one is pro, two is con, and then I think they’re on the other side up at the back, three and four. If you have a question or you are calling the question, you can go to any mic. When I recognize you, please state your name and street before making your comment or asking your question. Keep in mind that you are officially speaking to me, the moderator, though of course your comments are meant for everyone else in the room. This is designed to keep the temperature down and keep the meeting flowing smoothly or moderated. If you have questions, I will recognize the person most appropriate to answer. You will have two minutes to speak, not including the response. So if you have a question, then you get the answer. You may have the remainder of the time if you need it. But do not feel the need to use up all the time if you don’t need to. You should see timers around the room. I will accept a motion to cut off debate or move the previous question once there has been sufficient debate to inform the town meeting members of the pros and cons of the motion. You may not make a statement and then move the question. You may only move the question. Moving the previous question requires a second, is non-debatable, and requires two-thirds majority to pass. Moving the question is to, once we say we’re done debating, we’re done. In the absence of a motion to move the previous question, following a robust discussion, the moderator may determine, usually through a show of hands, that most of the voters are ready to vote, and the vote will be taken at that time. So as you noticed, you got your old-school green card on the way in as compared to what we’ve been doing as the clickers. We felt the number of folks who would be at this meeting and the work that it requires to get the clickers ready seemed like this was a better, more efficient option. And just so you know, we are looking at the next-gen clickers, which will not lose their batteries and roll down the aisles and all of that stuff. So hopefully by the spring meeting, we’ll have something different. At this time, I’d ask Ms. Arsenal to introduce the folks on this side of the stage.
My name is Fran Arsenal. I’m the Chair of the Acton Select Board. To my right is Dean Charter, Vice Chair, Alyssa Nichol, who has the role of the Clerk, and David Martin, and Jim Snyder Grant is here in spirit. He’s on a plane somewhere. Thank you. Thanks for—
Tom Collier.
Oh, sorry. John Mangiardi, the Town Manager, Tom Bijan, the Assistant Town Manager, and Leo Mercado, our Town Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cole, could you introduce the Finance Committee?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. At the end of the table, we have Allison Jones. Next is Roland Borden, this year’s Clerk. I am Jason Cole, this year’s Chair. Steve Noon. Gang Chen is our Associate Member, sitting on the back table by sheer luck of the draw, not by any specific reasoning. We have Scott Sullivan, this year’s Vice Chair, Adam Noldy, Greg Jarbo, Kristi Anderson, and Corinne Hogseth, who’s another Associate Member. Absent tonight for a family reason is Dave Wellinghoff, but we thank him for his service as well.
Thank you. Okay, we will move right along to our first article. You should have seen this version out in the check-in area. There were a few different places where it was stashed. Article 1, I must read the entire motion. For legal purposes, so please bear with me. Article 1. Authorize acquisition of property located at 19 and 35 Weatherby Street. 1. David Martin moves that the town authorize the Select Board to acquire the deed of a fee simple interest of the properties at 19 and 35 Weatherby Street for the purposes described in warrant Article 1. 2. Appropriate $3,680,000 for the purchase of both 19 and 35 Weatherby Street. 3. Authorize the Treasurer with the prior approval of the Select Board and recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to borrow up to $1,888,000 for the purchase of both 19 and 35 Weatherby Street, provided that the repayment term is not less than 15 years nor more than 20 years, and to transfer, appropriate, and expend the said amount, and apply any net premium and accrued interest received as a result of such borrowing to the costs of the project and reduce the borrowing authorization by the same amount. 4. Transfer, appropriate, and expend existing community preservation funds in the open space set aside in an amount of up to $1,300,000 for the purchase of both 19 and 35 Weatherby Street. 5. Raise, appropriate, transfer, or accept gifts and grants of such additional funds as are necessary to complete the purchase of 19 and 35 Weatherby Street. 6. Authorize the Select Board and the Conservation Commission to submit, on the town’s behalf, any and all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or the United States, or from any other state or federal programs. Authorize and direct the Select Board to impose a perpetual conservation restriction on the acquired property in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 12, on such terms and conditions as the Select Board may determine. 8. Authorize and direct the Select Board to delegate the care, custody, control, and management of the conservation land to the Conservation Commission, subject to the perpetual conservation restriction, and— 9. Authorize the Select Board, the Town Manager, the Treasurer, and the Conservation Commission, as appropriate, to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It’s been moved and seconded. Mr. Martin.
Good evening. Thank you for coming out to this special town meeting. I’m David Martin from the Select Board. Article 1 would authorize the town to acquire the property on Weatherby Street that I’ll show you in a minute for the purposes of conservation. The property is composed of two parcels at 19 and 35 Weatherby Street that are bounded on the northeast by the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. The entire 33 acres will be placed under conservation restriction by June 2025, essentially combining them with the existing conservation land to the south and west already owned The larger part of the property is wooded. It’s basically unimproved, except that it has some old ham radio towers on it. A smaller part contains an old house, not the house towards the right in this photo, which is someone else’s property, rather it’s the house in the shadows in the middle, more in the center of this photo. The wooded area in the distance is this iconic piece of property that you see from Route 2. From when I first came to Acton, I’ll never forget this dramatic change in landscape after entering Acton from the Concord Rotary. So how did we get to this point? Acton’s Open Space Committee has had its eye on this property for a long time. When the family that owns the property approached the town a couple of years ago, the town was busy with other things, especially working with the Water District on the 549 Main Street property. The sellers were patient. The Select Board and Town Manager moved forward this year to negotiate a memorandum of understanding to purchase the property contingent on town meeting approval. That’s what we’re discussing in this article. The Community Preservation Committee has already voted their approval. Notably, the town has received a half-million-dollar land grant from the state. That grant must be used this year. If town meeting votes to move forward, please note that the motion is worded to allow some flexibility in funding sources as we close the deal. However, the purchase price is fixed by this article. The price for both parcels is $3.68 million. That includes $80,000 for closing and conservation costs, plus the old house and the old radio towers are being removed by the sellers. Since only CPA money, grants, and gifts will be used, this purchase will not change taxes or compete with operational needs of the town. The plan for funding the total amount includes $1.2 million from the CPA open space set aside, $1.88 million of borrowing against future CPA money, that $500,000 grant from the Massachusetts land grant, and $100,000 gift from the Acton Conservation Trust. Thank you to ACT for their generosity. The Select Board voted unanimously to recommend Article 1. If you get out your opera glasses, you can read what the moderator read earlier. If you forgot your opera glasses, you just have to remember what the moderator said. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend this article.
We’ll open the floor to town meeting members wishing to speak on the article. Speaker at microphone 2.
Bob Van Meter, Half Moon Hill. I’m not opposed to the article, but I must say that I am disappointed that yet again the town meeting is being asked to support land acquisition for conservation purposes, and at least as far as I know, there was no preliminary discussion about whether part of the land might be used for affordable housing development. The town has, at least in 2021, had over 1,600 acres of conservation land out of close to 12,000 acres in the whole town, and we’re adding to that—I think there may be more that’s been added since 21. The Boston Globe today editorialized about the use of CPA funds for land acquisition that at least in some towns has been specifically used to block the development of housing. I’m not saying that that’s the case here, but I am disappointed that there was not some discussion about whether some portion of this land could be used for affordable housing development. Thank you.
Speaker at microphone 3.
I have four questions.
Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, I’m Ann Chang, Billings Street, South Acton Swamps. I would like to know how much we are paying land over per acre? What is the debt load of CPC when we add this $1.8 million, $800,000 on to the top? What is the percentage of land in Acton that is now tied up in conservation restrictions? And four, have you considered that future Acton residents might need usable open space for something other than conservation?
Mr. Martin.
Yes, thank you. I can answer some of your questions. The price per acre is about $109,000 per acre, I believe. The debt service for future CPA money will be about $170,000 a year, assuming that we borrow for 20 years and assuming certain interest rates. So that’s not a committed number, that’s an estimated number. I don’t know the answers to your other questions.
It’s the percentage of land already in conservation?
I’m sorry, I don’t know if anybody else has the answer to that question. I don’t. I’m hearing that someone says 21%. But—
Okay. Then my final question about future residents of Acton and needing open space for something other than conservation.
Mr. Martin.
So I agree that there are other uses besides conservation. The Select Board does discuss those. They’re not—in fact, we discussed them for this article, but that didn’t end up being part of the deal for this article, mainly because the land grant requires that the land be conserved.
Speaker at microphone 4.
Hi, I’m Ward Vine from 23 Half Moon Hill. My question is on Section 7, where it says that the land will be held in conservation land in perpetuity, subject to terms by the Board. And I’m just wondering what those terms might be, and whether or not this will end up being conservation land in perpetuity.
Mr. Martin.
Yes, it must be conservation land in perpetuity because of the land grant, because of the agreement with the sellers, and because we’re using CPA money to acquire it. Those terms and conditions have to do with things that are allowed for conserved land. For example, we can allow accessory parking on the land. Accessory parking means parking for a use consistent with the conserving of the land, so we could have a certain number of parking spaces to allow trail use, for example. That’s just one. We could build a kiosk, that might be, or some other small structure that’s associated with the use of the land. So uses that are related to the conservation use are allowed and could be negotiated when we arrange for the conservation restriction.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone 2.
Judy Kronwasser, Parker Street. You said that the land grant, $500,000, has to be used this year. Do you mean that the closing has to be next month, or is this a fiscal year?
This calendar year, so yes, we would have to close by the end of the year, and then we’re required to have the conservation restriction in place six months after that, so by June 2025.
Speaker at microphone 3. Just hit the button—there you go.
There we go. Sorry, new to this. I’m Rob Corduck. I live at 17 Horseshoe Drive. 17 Horseshoe Drive—or Horseshoe Drive—is a property adjacent to this land. I would just like to say that I am strongly in favor of moving forward with this. This feels to me like a one-time opportunity to secure a large tract of conservation land to help keep Acton green for the environment, for our overall property values, so I would just, again, like to say that I strongly support this. So thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone 3. I think you have to hit the button there.
Carla Hyler, Old Stone Brook. I just want to say, this is a wonderful opportunity for Acton. I was on a walk last week with a wetlands biologist, where he explained by acquiring this land for conservation actually is a unique opportunity. And this is something that—we all have needs. Yes, I understand affordable housing. Yes, I understand a whole number of things that we should be concerned about. But this particular opportunity allows for wildlife preservation. It allows a number of rinald pools that are back there to remain connected, and again, God ain’t making more land, as my father used to say. So this is a wonderful opportunity for the town of Acton. We have a lot of financial resources to help us acquire this land, and I can’t help but say, this is something we really need to preserve for our future, for our children, for our grandchildren, in generations to come. Thank you.
Seeing no others—oh, no. Seeing no others, we will go to a vote. This does require a two-thirds majority to pass. We’ll start with a voice vote. If you could use your normal voice, please. So all who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
I declare that the vote does pass by the two-thirds majority required. In general, I like to discourage applause, though that was within keeping, I think. We’ll now go to Article 2. Authorize collective bargaining agreement, facilities, cemetery, and public works. Dean Charter moves that the town appropriate and transfer $60,000 from free cash to fund the cost items contained in collective bargaining agreement between the town and its facilities, Center and Public Works Personnel Union, AFS CME. Do I hear a second? It’s been moved and seconded. Mr. Charter.
Thank you. The—this agreement has come out as a result of a lengthy negotiation between the Town Manager and his office and the union involved. Thank you to both of those entities for getting this job done. It’s a three-year agreement. The most noticeable item in this agreement is Year 1, FY25, the year that we’re in right now. All positions are receiving a $2-per-hour wage increase. Fiscal ’26, it’ll be a 2.5% cost of living increase. Fiscal ’27, same, 2.5% cost of living. It’s a slightly higher adjustment the first year than what you’re used to seeing. This is because we’ve been having a very hard time attracting and retaining employees in the public works operation. Some of the other units did receive somewhat larger pay raises in the past few years. This is an attempt to catch up. As most of you have seen, if you drive around town, you see the flashing light signs. We’re constantly looking for public works employees. The low pay scale that we had was part of the problem. Other parts of the problem, which we’re going to attempt to address, have to do with the working conditions, including the existing facility, and the lack of any kind of facilities at the public works building for female employees, which we’re trying to recruit. That’ll be a subject that we’ll be discussing at our May Town Meeting. The other items that are of interest in this agreement include some wording for overtime adjustments, discipline, and most notably, the town will pay to train an employee to get a commercial driver’s license. Cost of that training can be upwards of $6,000. We have—in this contract brought in new wording, which will allow a clawback provision so that we don’t spend $6,000 of taxpayer money and have the employee leave within a few months. So we do have some good protections here for the taxpayers, and hopefully we’ll be able to recruit and have a good workforce in the long term. Because we’re already in Year 1 of the contract, we do have to appropriate $60,000 from free cash, which will fund that first year, that $2-per-hour increase. Thank you. If you have any questions, we’ll be happy to answer them.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is a fair and fiscally responsible agreement, and the Finance Committee recommends this article.
Town meeting members?
Yeah, Fred Luffler, 25 Grasshopper Lane. So, three questions. One is, is this in line with other towns around here, and like the COLA and other raises and things, like will this make us competitive? I guess maybe it’s a two-part second question. Does Massachusetts allow the clawback? Like, can we really—if someone—if we’re training and things like this, and someone does leave to go to another department, or something along those lines, is that a legal thing you can do here? And I guess the second part of that is, like, are other cities offering similar CDL training and stuff like this?
Mr. Charter.
So, all I can say about the wording in the contract for the clawback provision is that these were all negotiated in conjunction with the union’s representative, the union’s lawyer, and town has its own labor council, which was very involved in that, so I defer to them. I couldn’t hear your first question, sir.
Oh, I’m curious, does this make us competitive? Like, the COLA increases and everything, is this in line with what we’re seeing in other towns and the cost of living in the future?
Yes, it is—it does bring us more competitive. The issue that we have for blue-collar employees and people with those kinds of licenses and experience, all of the towns and the private sector are all competing for the same pool of employees. So we think right now with this, plus the other benefits the town offers, we think we’re in a more competitive situation than we are, but I’ll be able to report back more coherently in about six months.
Thank you.
Seeing no others, we’ll vote. This does require a majority to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay. The vote does pass unanimously. Article 3. Authorize collective bargaining agreement, public safety dispatch. Dean Charter moves that the town appropriate and transfer $15,000 from free cash to fund the cost items contained in collective bargaining agreement between the town and its public safety dispatchers union, International Brotherhood of Teamsters Local Union 25. Do I hear a second? It’s been moved and seconded. Mr. Charter.
Once again, we have a contract here that was negotiated between management and the Teamsters Union. We are actually in the first year of the contract already. We’re in fiscal ’25. Slightly different package that was compared to the one that we last voted on. Year 1 is a 2.75% cost of living increase. Fiscal ’26, a 1.5% increase. Fiscal ’27, a 2.75% COLAR increase. We have added some other language to the contract to provide additional step for more senior employees, and we have adjusted the shift schedule. Because we’re already in Year 1 of the contract, we will have to appropriate money tonight, which is $15,000, which funds the first year of the contract, the year that we’re in right now. Be happy to answer any questions.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Finance Committee recommends this article.
Speaker at microphone four.
Dan Buckley, Independence Road. Can you put that screen on for the percentage? Is there any reason why that isn't the same as the other, one we just did, for percentage, for the bumps?
Mr. Charter.
So, these are the results of negotiations. We didn't seem to have the disparity with this particular unit, as we did with the DPW workers. These negotiations have taken a long time, and that's what was worked out. Obviously, there's a lot of strategizing involved on both sides for how to increase the salaries properly. But, you know, there's no underlying strategy here, other than trying to provide proper compensation, and be able to make sure that we've got a workforce ready to step in.
Thank you.
Speaker at microphone one.
It's a combination of a question and an observation. Sorry, I forgot. Ian Watkins, Strawberry Hill Road. Observation and a question, I suppose, that you've talked about the cost in free cash, but you haven't said how many employees are affected by the negotiation. So it'd be kind of useful to get a feel for how many employees you're talking about, to understand the cost in free cash per employee basis.
I believe that in the public works department, I believe we had 27 employees. I think in this particular unit, I think we have nine employees. I'm looking to the town manager for...
Yes, hi, thank you. John Manager, I think town manager. We have 29 in the DPW, so just off, and then we have 10 in the dispatchers group, but a few of those are part-time.
Speaker at microphone four.
Yeah, just a question. Why wouldn't this cost of living be included in the original contract if they're only one-year-old? And are there, second question, other contracts that we aren't including? Like, are we signing contracts in the coming, that we know we're signing soon, that will have similar problems?
Mr. Charter.
So, the, excuse me, the contract that typically is a three-year contract for both units, and that contract had expired. So they were continuing, working under their old work rules for, they've been working now for about six months, under the old contract. So this will, basically, it's a two-and-a-half-year contract, but some of the pay, obviously, is going to be retroactive for the first six months. The contract's expired at the end of June.
Seeing no others, standing, we'll vote. Requires a majority to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
All who are opposed, please say nay. The vote does pass unanimously. Article 4, town capital purchase replacement of ambulance. Dean Charter moves that the town, one, authorize upon the recommendation of the Select Board, a lease purchase financing agreement for the acquisition of an ambulance that may be acquired through the issuance of debt, provided that the term of such an agreement does not exceed 10 years, the useful life of the ambulance as determined by the Select Board. Two, authorize the town manager to enter into such an agreement on behalf of the town. And three, appropriate $140,000 from the ambulance enterprise fund to fund the payments for the first fiscal year of such lease purchase financing agreement. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Charter.
Thank you. So, as I'm sure most of you understand, our firefighters are cross-trained as firefighters and as either EMTs or paramedics. We run our own ambulance service. The town currently has on its books three ambulances. They're used extensively. In point of fact, the majority of the day-to-day business of the fire department now is providing medical assistance. These are the, the three ambulances. Rescue 35 is supposed to be the primary. The idea is you have a primary ambulance, a secondary, in case you get a larger event or simultaneous medical events, which happens very frequently. And then a third ambulance as a mechanical backup for when, when and if one of the other ones breaks down. So our newest ambulance was purchased in 2022. It has 51,000 miles on it. This is as of the 1st of January. Right now, it has over 75,000 miles on it. Rescue 34, our secondary, again, back in January, had 107,000 miles on it. Now it only has 108,000 miles on it, and that's because that ambulance has been broken down and out of service since July. Rescue 33 is the mechanical backup. That now has moved up to having 96,000 miles on it. We've been informed by the Office of Emergency Medical Services that most likely our mechanical backup ambulance will not be certified next year, due to its condition. These vehicles work very hard and continuously around the clock. The biggest problem that we have with them, and which is why we're here tonight, is that it takes 24 to 25 months to get the ambulance after we've signed the purchase order for it. So it puts us into a real problem trying to keep these ambulances going, and trying to continue to provide a high level of care for all of our residents and visitors to the town of Acton. They're also used extensively for mutual aid to other towns. We have actually enhanced the level of emergency medical services compared to some of our neighboring towns, so sometimes they have to call on us, or there's just not enough ambulances available. Cost of this new ambulance is about $650,000. Annual payments on it would be about $140,000, and that money is acquired from the ambulance revolving fund. If any of you have been unfortunate enough to be hauled off in one of these ambulances, at some point, you get some paperwork from the insurance company saying how much that trip cost. That money goes into the ambulance revolving fund, and is used to purchase new ambulances and other medical equipment, and to assist with the pay of some of the paramedic firefighters. So there'll be no tax impact. It's actually, your insurance company is paying for these things one way or another. So, we think we're not in a, we're in a precarious position right now. We think it's very important that we get going on purchasing this ambulance. Hopefully, the one that's been out of service since July will come back again, so we won't have a real severe situation if our backup is not certified again. But I think it's very important to be able to move ahead with this quickly. Thank you.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Finance Committee recommends this article. This is a vital piece of equipment for our town, and due to the lengthy time to get a new one, the Finance Committee does recommend this article.
Thank you. Seeing no one standing, we'll vote. This does require a two-thirds majority to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
All who are opposed, please say nay. The vote does pass unanimously.
Thank you.
Bringing us to our final article. So, before we dispose of that, once again, thank you for coming out on this unusual time and hour. But, looks like we'll be done before we normally would have started. So, Article 5, Veterans Tax Abatement Annual COLA Increase. Fran Arsenault moves that the town accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 221, to increase the property tax exemptions for veterans equal to the cost of living as determined by the Consumer Price Index for such year. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Arsenault.
So, Article 5, the Veterans Tax Exemption Annual Cost of Living Increase. The HERO Act, let's see, what am I doing here? The HERO Act in Massachusetts refers to an act honoring, empowering, and recognizing our service members and veterans. It was signed into law by Governor Maura Healey on August 2, 2024. This landmark legislation is designed to provide significant support and benefits to veterans in the state. Key provisions in the HERO Act are increased disabled veteran annuity, which raises the annual annuity from 2,000 to 2,500 over two years. Expanded Vet Hire Tax Credit increases the tax credit for small businesses hiring veterans to $2,500. Extended Active Duty Service Buyback Program extends the timeframe for veterans in public service to utilize this program from 180 days to 10 years. Modernized Services and Increased Inclusivity promotes inclusivity for LGBTQ+ veterans and improves access to mental health and other services. Additional benefits and support includes various other provisions to enhance the lives of veterans and their families. Overall, the HERO Act represents a significant step forward in supporting Massachusetts veterans and recognizing their service and sacrifice. A yes vote on Article 5 will ensure that the exemptions remain consistent with inflation in the same way that several other means tested and senior tax exemptions that the town offers do. And the Acton Select Board recommends this article. And I just wanted to give a shout-out to Mark Ducey. The photos are of the annual pancake breakfast at the high school on Veterans Day.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. With immense respect and gratitude for our service members and veterans, the Finance Committee recommends this article.
Seeing no one standing, I will just note, in case anyone wants to go look this up, it's Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22I, not 221, it's 22I. Seeing no one standing, we'll vote. This does require a majority to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
All who are opposed, please say nay. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
I believe Mr. Cole has a point of personal privilege.
Yes, I do, Madam Moderator. I would like to ask the town meeting members to join me in thanking Adam Noldy for his six-plus years of service to the town, as he is retiring from the committee tonight. Thank you, Adam, and please remember, you're always welcome back.
I'll recognize a motion from Ms. Arsenault.
Do I hear a second? To dissolve town meeting?
There's a motion to dissolve town meeting.
Second.
All who are in favor?
Aye!
Thank you very much.